Did you?
No.
There's no way I can't.
I'm trying to tune this aggravated with all these. Bark.
I cannot see that. I have to look at that one there to see.
I started saying.
I agree.
Well, this type of gas.
Who you did.
Turns your lives off by my bill.
He's got it failed.
Doesn't.
Yeah, but he's calling it, you know, all the deals.
You're trouble. And one day he was trying to come back like he really did. He's.
So when will be this?
I was calling, right? My call is kind of far.
I'll be telling her. It's about the four.
Amazing.
So he's dead. That way he can, you know, get the schedule.
You play everything.
Cleaned up.
Well, it should be. You know, I know my last year, he played it. I have to load up. I'm going to go forward there and play a little bit there. My stuff. The baby gun, he's playing tomorrow. Go down there after work. He got to work.
Yeah, he's not. You really got to come up. You just like to split it.
It was all three again.
And then all take a strand, shake a strand, and twist it. And then all then.
Behind my mom.
And then you do this.
That's the first time ever. There were a couple of people.
Yeah.
I think that's your.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm more like.
I get so many problems. My hair like.
That's very easy. If it ain't enough.
More. Yeah. Tries to get several.
A carpenter over there.
Just make a swash.
Yeah. College group. Yep. Her husband asked for your number. I wouldn't give it to him, but I said that when you get back, I'd like to get together and play down here. I wouldn't give it to him.
Yeah. I'll talk back.
Yeah. I told him I'd make it to the stadium. We should get all the way. Yes, I got a shoe paddle. Just clean it off. Whatever middle. Also, me drew a gun.
He's ready.
I say, where's your gavel? Where's your gavel?
I looked it in there.
He never brings it.
I do.
You expect us to go wrong?
Meeting called a order. Left my gavel in there, so, uh, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Get everybody present, but, uh, Noel. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda or amend the agenda, actually.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Keith made a motion.
I'll say it.
Billy, Billy second, all in favor? With a aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna do this. Well, let's see. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Any changes or anything? The minutes will stand as presented. Okay, Peggy, you didn't have anything, of course?
No.
And we're gonna skip Suzanne. And we're gonna go right straight down to me. Uh, the chamber. Okay. We have the chamber here, some of the board members from the chamber, uh, and we're gonna discuss the agreement with, with the chamber. So, any question, questions to answer, some, I guess? So, any, any questions for the, the board or Judy?
Well, I would like to ask one question. Uh, I think we discussed that a little bit, uh, a couple meetings ago. You know, I think if we look at this new, uh, chamber agreement with the city, uh, one of the things we as Aldermen have to do is be fiscally responsible, you know, for the taxpayers of the city. And we want to assure them that we are spending their tax dollars wisely. And, uh, and I have had, uh, citizens come to me and ask, you know, about the amount of funding that we, we are giving to the chamber. And, uh, and assure them that we, we support our chamber. Matter of fact, uh, a few months ago, I went around checking different cities in the southern part of the state to find out how, how many, how much support they gave to the chamber, and many cities don't give any support to the chamber at all. So, uh, but I was able to just buy that we are very generous with our Chamber of Commerce in supporting them. But I was looking at the 2021 budget and I noticed a, uh, an office staff holiday bonus of $2,000. And, uh, you know, I had to question that as to maybe why that was. Is there an explanation for that or?
I spoke with Judy earlier today, but she can answer.
Sure, sure. Do you want me to stand or?
No, no. You're fine.
No. Well, thank you. I said, um, yeah, I was speaking with mayor earlier and, uh, uh, and this is our proposed budget, of course. Um, last year in December, there was a $2,000 bonus given that was split between myself and my office assistant, Nina. And Amelia can speak for the board if she wants to, but I'll explain. You can.
And that was a thousand apiece, a thousand each?
No, it was, uh, 1,200 and 800.
Okay.
So we, we shared that. But, um, when we shut down last year, well, was, everything shut down in April, uh, for the month of April, um, and we didn't know what was ahead. No one did. And, uh, businesses didn't know what was ahead. And so all of a sudden, we found that, uh, membership dues were not coming in. Uh, people were not purchasing ad spaces for the Ava Community Guide like they normally did, and they were just kind of waiting and seeing. They just weren't sure. So we had a sharp decrease in some revenue that we were used to having come in. And, uh, so the agreement between Nina and I was that we would just, uh, kind of go on. She would go on lower hours and continue working from home once everything opened up again early May. Uh, and she went down to 10 hours working from home. And I continued to work full time, but, um, took a cut in my salary. And we did that willingly, uh, until October. So at that time, uh, the board kind of revisited things and we were, uh, by then people had started to purchase ads and, um, dues that were late started to come in and things started to look a little bit better. And we were so grateful that we had the city's financial support during that time so that we could pay our monthly bills. But, um, the board took a look and, uh, in, uh, in October and said, okay, things are, you know, looking so much better now. Let's go back to, uh, your pay the way it was. Um, but, you know, there's no raises this year and understandably so. So the end of the year, uh, the board contacted us and let us know that they wanted to give us, uh, the bonuses, um, to partially make up for the income that we had lost, uh, during the year, so.
Okay, you said partially make up, so.
Yeah, did fully make up.
About what the difference was, approximately.
Did we did, I don't remember. I'm sorry. I think it was, I think for me, it was about 2,700, just for me. And Nina, I think Nina, I don't remember, I can get that to you. I'm sorry.
It would have been considerably less than that.
Yeah, considerably less than that.
But you said Nina went down to what, 10, 10 hours?
10 hours a week.
10 hours total?
Yeah. And then, um, then I don't remember the month, but she came back then, um, at 20 hours a week. Yeah, I think it was October or November.
And 20 is her normal. 20 is her normal.
Yeah, about 25, 20, 25, depending on if we have an event going on or something extra going on at the office.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? You got any, anything you don't want to share with us?
I do.
Sure.
I do, just, I know that over the last, um, I don't know, three or four weeks, there's been kind of some information that's trickled our way through, um, through the newspaper, through different folks. And, um, we, we just really wanted to maybe give you guys the correct information. Um, and so I met with you earlier and, and shared some information with you. Um, there were some comments made that the chamber had accepted an out of town bid for the directory some years ago. Um, and it being a higher bid than the Douglas County Herald had given. Um, and I looked back, I spent a couple hours and looked back through her minutes and printed them off, uh, brought them to Burley. And, uh, I just couldn't find anything to that effect at all. Uh, we've never accepted an out of town bid. I went back to 2017 with the printings of our minutes and then the bids that we received. Um, but I do have, uh, beyond, you know, before 2017, of course, accessible to you all. You know, at my office at any time. Before that time, Sherry Vanderstein, uh, her company was called Intelligent Design. She's the one that did the book prior to, uh, to that time. And when I first came on, she was doing the book. So, and her business was right here in town as well.
I was, I was looking through this and probably where that information come from, uh, yes, Summit was cheaper, but they come back and got another $200, which made it more. And, and that's probably where that information come from because they ended up being higher.
Oh, I see.
I found that in here.
Yes, so, yeah, so some of it.
That's, uh, that's probably where that information come from.
I see. Okay, that's understandable.
But it made it, uh, it made Summit advertising higher than what, uh, Douglas County Herald.
There, so, and when we did the ad on later after the bid was accepted? Okay. So at the time that the bid was accepted, though, they were lower. And Summit advertising was a local company. That was Tressy Koloski, um, and Joe Koloski was our ranger here for a long time, the forestry department.
But anyway, that, that was questionable there. When you, when you add $200 more to it. I brought it to 63, 65, and then another bid would come in at 62, 50. And, uh, I want to say that, uh, and actually the 62, 50 is a lower bid. I mean, it, uh.
Okay, so the question was if it was that we accepted a higher bid, not an out of town?
Yeah, and actually, as it turned out, it was a higher bid.
Okay, so to.
I mean, yeah, I come in originally lower, but then it was added to it. So it did come out for, and that's, that's where that's come from because I found it in here, uh, where it was added.
Was the ad on done after we accepted their bid?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the time the bids were presented, they were the lower bid?
But.
Okay.
But, I mean, it looks, it looks a little odd that.
It does. I understand how it would be.
You take bids and then you add to them. It probably hadn't ought to do that. I mean, it doesn't look very good.
It does happen, though, and that, it's actually happened with the Herald, um, which it just happens. We, we needed to add some pages. Um, we actually oversold our ads, which is great. We, and we want, we didn't want to turn any of our businesses away. Um, it's more revenue for us, it's more advertising for them. So, um, there's, there's been several times we've added pages with the Herald, which meant that their bid, their price went up and we were fine to agree with that after.
That's, that's a little bit of comparison. I mean, uh, I don't say, you know, that's not adding to a bid. It's, uh, if you're adding pages, it's the individual that's adding. But this here was not adding pages, it was adding to the price without adding any, any additional service, uh, on this one here. Uh, the $200 is not adding, uh, additional pages. It was just adding additional cost.
Okay, so.
And so that wouldn't be a good comparison, really. I mean, because.
True, you're right.
Uh, page by page, I'm sure that that's what they done. Second average of what the cost was per page. And then being that you added pages to it, that would have brought their cost up.
Sure.
But this one here, and I imagine that's where that, that's come from. It's just, uh, there's $200 added to a particular bid.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure it had to be, if there's no notation of it on her bid sheet, I'm sure it had to be for a reason. We would.
Yeah, it's, uh, there is a reason on here, but, uh, it's still, it says for, uh, had time needed for ad, address changes. Well.
That's right. That's when we, that's when we did the whole address changing with the maps. And that wasn't figured in. We, we only had, um, PDF files of a lot of the ads that were, that were done before, um, for Sherry Vanderstein had done them. She moved to Oklahoma and took all of the files, not, you know, hatefully, but it just happened that way. She, she took the files with her. So all we had to give to, um, Ms. Koloski was our own PDF version of the book.
Yeah.
So when we did that, um, and then the city addresses changed on all the maps, well, all of the addresses changed on the ads for these businesses. And, um, we didn't factor, we didn't even think about that. And so she needed the extra time to go and change all of those PDF ads.
Yeah.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
But I want to say that's where, that's where that's all come from.
Yeah, it was just, it was just an added thing that wasn't, um, wasn't an issue when the bids were set. So, yeah, thank you for that.
Okay. Do you have anything else to, to add on that end?
Um, I think another thing was, um, about canceled events. There was some questions about that.
Yeah.
About past events.
Brought up the last meeting.
Um, of course, last year, everybody canceled their events. It was COVID. Uh, what we did at the chamber was, uh, when things shut down just before April, and we knew we were getting notice that things were gonna be shut down, um, we have our banquet in April. That was our first big event. And we had already set the music, we'd already planned everything. And then, of course, this just came out of nowhere for all of us. Uh, we were in contact with the health department every time we'd have an event. We, I even called and talked to you several times and Suzanne. Um, and so right away, uh, we knew we, we couldn't do the banquet. The health department was like, it's not advisable. You're gonna have 200 people in the cafeteria. Um, the CDC is recommending these things and we recommend those things as well. So we, we did cancel our banquet. Um, and then, uh, our next event was going to be Spring Citywide Yard Sale. So again, we contacted a health department, talked to Valerie over there. And, uh, she said that we could go ahead with the event, but we needed to print out, um, uh, social distancing and other guidelines from the health department. We had to post them, post them on our Facebook page and make sure they were printed out and handed out to everybody who was participating with us. And that's kind of how we got to have that event. And then we did the fall citywide yard sale as well. Um, our other events, we had to cancel. We did end up having, uh, three, um, membership or luncheons towards the end of the year. Um, and then, you know, some of our hosts canceled. They weren't comfortable and that's totally fine. Um, and then we did get to have the Christmas parade. We were at the end of the year and outside. Uh, we did cancel Blade Top in 2019. Uh, first time, I think it had been canceled. I, in my 11 years, it hadn't been canceled since I've been there. Um, and we had some questionable weather up there. But this particular time, and we agonized over this as a board, uh, this particular time, uh, the forecast was for severe thunderstorms and wind. And we already had, uh, money allotted and, uh, three bands that were already scheduled to come and play for us. They bring their own equipment, very expensive equipment. We're out in the open, there's no shelter there anymore. Uh, and we had also ordered food, a lot of food. And so we need to give time, if we were gonna cancel, we need to give time to, uh, cancel those things with the musicians and the food and then give time to cancel with the public. And all, all of our vendors and people that come up and, um, you know, help us at the event. So we went back and forth and, um, our meeting, our board meeting was five days before the event and that was the forecast. And it remained the forecast until Thursday evening, when everything started to change. And of course, on Saturday morning, that storm went down into Arkansas. Yeah. So it happens. Um, and then we had to cancel the Christmas parade in 2014. As you know, we had a pretty big snow and ice storm at that time, so, uh, we had to cancel it then. But otherwise, um, we would have our events, we have our events. We love having our events. So, um, if there's, unless there's something I'm missing.
That was, that was some of the questions that come up at the last meeting. Was there any more that you, the council would have for?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I could make kind of make a statement, I guess, more of a question than a statement.
Sure.
The thing is, I'm kind of a half full, not half empty. And then you look, when you, I mean, we're, we're behind Chamber, we're, we're behind the Chamber of Commerce. Nothing's gonna happen to Chamber Commerce, you know? But, uh, if we, if we make an adjustment in the budget, or whether we do or whether we don't, you still get a substantial amount of money.
Absolutely.
And if I go to, right around here, if I can go to 10 or 12 towns and say, how would you like to have 25 to 30,000 dollars? And they would hug me and jump all over. So, uh, if there is, if there is something here, but I'm just saying, there's, you're, we're sitting here and this is the only town here like us in this vicinity. If you go, just take it around Licking, Houston, Kabul, Willow, West Plains, Gainesville, and it is round and all these towns, they, they have a chamber. They have chambers, but they, that's, the city does not give them any money.
I, I agree with you.
Not one dime.
We are so fortunate. We, we really appreciate your support.
So if, if there's some adjustments made, that don't mean that we just, oh, we just hate y'all and we're just gonna, this folded up. We're not, we're, but so it's still, our glass, our glass is still half full or more. So.
And I'd like to, I'd like to comment on that also. You know, I think, I think speaking for all of us here, that we're pleased with, uh, you know, we have a, you know, compared to other towns, we've got a good chamber. And, uh, we're not, we're not saying that by no means, for sure.
I appreciate that. I, I think we have, have had a really good relationship all these years. I shared with, um, with Burley. Uh, I've been in meetings with other directors from other towns and they don't have the support, not to mention the financial support, or maybe they are getting some financial support, but they don't have the relationship with the city. And they were always surprised to hear how well we, we get along with the city. And even I was surprised to hear that they didn't in their towns. So I've always counted as very fortunate and, uh, really appreciative of the support, financial and otherwise. And you're right, we, we really are, um, highly supported by the city financially compared to other towns. And we can get into numbers, but it really doesn't matter. I mean, your decision is your decision and we're grateful for the support that you give. But I think unless someone else wants to speak, for me, I just wanted to come and give you correct information so that you can make an informed decision and so that you can, um, think rightly about this and not about things that might have been said or heard or misunderstood. So that was my main objective.
I spoke with Judy earlier and, um, I, uh, I feel like, you know, if she'll come by quarterly, and, and actually that's what our agreement is, but, uh, I don't know when and where we got away from that, but it.
There was another administration we won't say names.
Okay. But anyway, we, I think if we can get back, Judy coming by quarterly and, and if there is questions, uh, we can, we can ask her and, uh.
Absolutely.
And keep everything, you know, uh, if there isn't questions, just keep them up front. Yeah. We, we can answer quarterly. And Judy was, was good with that in there.
And we'll, we're happy to continue to send you every single month our word packets, which includes our minutes and our financial reports. We're happy to keep doing that like we have been as well. And I'll be sure to schedule a meeting here quarterly to speak with you.
I'd like to follow up on what Stan was saying. Kind of getting the feeling that maybe the chamber thinks we're cutting you or whatever happens, whether we do or whether we don't, uh, maybe to try to control your bid process or what you do. That's totally not the case.
I don't think that wrong.
That is not the perception here.
You know, we just have to take a look at how we find each and every project. I know the mayor, uh, you know, has people come in to him on a weekly, monthly basis, you know, wanting money, needing money, wanting more money. And those are just decisions that we have to make as to how we spend the taxpayer money. And, uh, it's kind of my position that, uh, the way we as a Board of Aldermen support our business and our chamber is by, uh, making sure that we have the, uh, financial means to create amenities in the city, such as our city pool, our city park, our downtown square. We've got nice streets. We've got a, uh, good electrical department. We've got the best water and sewer department, uh, you know, in the area. That, those are all important things for our, uh, community businesses to, uh, to rely on. And, and, uh, so that's one reason we look at where we spend our money.
And I think that's well taken because I meet a lot of people in my position and several of them. And people talk about Ava and they only talk about it twice before they move here. A lot of them. And they see all the nice things we've got. We've got an airport. What city our size has got another airport? A radio station, a newspaper, a swimming park, basically, a beautiful park. And it's constantly being upgraded by the city. And it's wonderful. It's just great. Uh, I can come in here and talk to any of you guys. I know you all. And if I ask for something, if it's within your means and power, you do it. And we have had a wonderful partnership. Maybe not as wonderful as I've had here, but close. And that is important. It's all about collaboration. And economic development requires collaboration between the city fathers, Chamber of Commerce businesses, churches, the whole thing. I'm so happy I moved here. I can't say enough. So that's my two cents. I left a couple of things up there for you because that's part of economic development, you know? We had a wonderful Discovery Ozarks. That was a chamber function that had to be canceled after three wonderful years, growing every single year. We had to cancel it in 2020. You know, we hated to do it and it was a seven day event. We had to cut it back this year to three days because we didn't know how well received it would be by the public. But it's taken off. We had wonderful people on these tours from out of state. A lot of them have relatives here, but they were still from out of state and that word travels and they're moving back. And they're bringing, in most cases, they're bringing some money, you know? Anyhow. I'm sorry, I took a vacation.
We appreciate very much what you do. You do a lot of things with them. We've, uh, the city of Ava's done really well over the years. And I, uh, as far as putting my finger on why we'd get them down here, get people drawn to this area, I don't know. I mean, we're not on a beaten path and we still proffer. We, are we just busting at the seams? No, we never will. We'll never be a bedroom town or nothing like that. But we just, it's just steady growth. And, uh, it's, uh, you know, there's, there's different things. I guess we can attribute that too, but, uh, and that's what we want. That's what we're all working together to do, so.
Yep. I agree.
But, uh, as far as putting my finger on just one particular thing, I can't because it's unusual for, you know, no railroad, no, no main highway. But we, we continue to grow.
We've talked about that, that Mansfield should be the, the gem.
Yeah.
It's got a four lane highway right in through it and a railroad right through it. We got nothing down, but we're just busting out and they're going down.
And you've got businesses from these communities you folks have talked about this evening that are coming here to join our chamber and they've got one right next door in their own city, but they're coming here for a reason. For the support that you, you're giving them.
If I could, one more thing?
Sure.
So, um, in our contract that, that you guys have written up with us, there are, um, I think about seven or eight line items.
Yeah.
So, um, I just, Nina kind of worked on it for a little bit and we took the liberty just to kind of expand on that and let you know just what the chamber does to fulfill those line items for you in our agreement with the city. So, uh, Suzanne has copies and if not, I've got some here. You guys can just take those with you and take a look at them. can just take those with you and take a look at them. Just a kind of a portion of what we do in our operation each day.
Any, any other questions for the Chamber? Okay. We'll move on down to trash. Do you wanna, do you wanna make a decision on that, or you wanna, how do you want to handle that with, uh, Noel is gone? Do you wanna, you wanna table it?
Table it to the next meeting.
Table it to the next meeting.
Uh, it's, it's up to the council. Pardon, I'm sorry.
We can table it to the next meeting, and we can either table the payment till after the decision's made, since we'll have a meeting right there at the beginning, or however you want me to do it.
It's, it's our, however you want to do it. However you want to do it.
You have a preference, Mayor? I don't really have a preference.
Whatever, whatever, whatever board decides.
I don't have a preference. It's one of the things we want to do.
Well, let's, let's table that till Noel to be at the next one.
For board?
Yeah.
I'd be on the table.
I'll second that motion.
Keith made a motion and, uh, to table it to the next meeting, Billy, or was it Stan? Somebody did. But Noel will be back. But anyway, second, all in favor with aye.
Aye.
Now we'll move to the trash.
Okay. Before you move to trash, does, does anyone need a copy of this?
I, I think we've got, I think we've got them done.
I did all have one.
You do not.
Oh, okay. We, uh, we talked about- We talked about the trash rates. We talked about the trash rates at, uh, at our last meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stan.
Very much. Uh, did everybody get a chance to, or you remember what we talked about on the, the rates? Actually, it just kind of $2 rolled out on, on everything, and, uh, but anyway, uh- If everybody's, uh, okay with those, uh, with those rates, uh, we made a motion to accept the increases on them.
You're gonna do your ordinance?
Yeah, we'll do it. We need a motion though before we do the ordinance, definitely.
Noel, did you do that?
Uh, a motion on the rates itself, or, or, oh, you've got an ordinance up here.
Yeah, we got an ordinance, but we wanted to get it down here to, we wanted to pass it before we got to that. Uh, I think that's sweet. But don't matter, we can do it twice.
Whatever you want to do.
Well, we can, yeah, we can, we can, uh, but if, anyway, if everybody's ready or, uh, okay with those increases, uh, we can, we can just have them read the ordinance twice here in a minute, and, and we'll be fine on that. I think it was Tuesday of last week, we had a, uh, an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, and that was for the, uh, CDBG money of $700,000. Is that right, Peggy?
$705,000.
Seven, $705,000?
Yeah, $705,000.
And, uh, anyway, uh, uh, Noel and Stan and myself sat in on that with, uh, Trent Courtney from Skocog. And, uh, anyway, we, we chose, we, we done it on point system, and we chose, uh, Bartlett and Martin. And, uh-
Anyway, was it Bartlett and West?
Bartlett and Martin.
Bartlett and Martin.
But anyway, uh, Trent said that, uh, we would have a, a meeting with them in, in two weeks. So about a week from now, we'll, we'll have a, a sit-down meeting with the, the contractors and go, or the engineers and go over the streets that we picked out to do in the northeast corridor. And, uh, but anyway, that should be, Trent should be doing that, and Skocog should be doing it within a week. Chief Overcast had come to me, but, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but anyway-
Did you say the north?
Northeast. Did I say the west? I meant northeast. I'm glad you called me on. Uh, Chief Overcast come to me earlier this week and was, uh, brought some information on, uh, well, they're, they're, what do you call them? Radar signs? Radar guns?
Yeah, they're a digital radar, uh, sign that you see where it tells you your speed. The speed is this, and this is where you're traveling at this time.
But, uh, anyway, he, he brought, it's a, a package deal. We can purchase two of them for like $5,500. And there was two packages. One of them was a little less than that, but, uh, I went, I just wrote down the, the higher of the two. But, uh, I'd like permission if you all are okay with that. And the reason, uh, the chief thought it would be a good idea. We have areas that, uh, it's constant speeding, and, uh, if we thought that, or if we put them in, and they're portable. You could go either way. You could go permanent or portable. We thought we could put them in certain spots and, uh, just call their attention to it, and, uh, it would, it would help slow traffic down. And then once you kind of got it, got their attention called to it, you can move them to a different area. So, uh, but we can, we can, uh, purchase two of them for $5,500.
That was gonna be my question, if they were portable. Because we have, we have several areas that tell that, uh, that's an issue, yeah.
Yeah, if it worked, I slowed down, then I see-
I did, yeah. I'm guilty of it.
Anyway, uh, if it's, uh, the council thinks it's, uh, okay with it, need a motion to maybe look into purchasing a, a couple of them, and, uh, but they could move them around at his discretion wherever he thinks they might be. And I, I think the portable would be the best way to go if we-
Absolutely. He'll need to move them in different areas.
And even on my street first.
I'll make a motion that we purchase two, uh, two of these radar signs for the, uh, mobile radar signs for the city.
I'll second that.
I wish the old Highway Patrol would have a second to that.
Billy and Keith, and all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Okay, just a, just a quick, quick update on the Provoian. Uh, maintenance guys have got it. The structure is up, and all they like on it is, is concrete and floor. And first of the month, we should have a couple of barbecue grills. Is that right? So, uh, we, uh, it's, it's just about ready to go. We'll have to put some gravel down for a parking lot and, uh-
But that's really all it likes is concrete to basically have the structure done. When do we plan on doing that concrete, do you know?
I'm glad you mentioned that. Uh, weather permitting will be that Friday morning. Uh, we're just, that'll be about finished yet, so.
I did pull in there the other day and look at it, and I stopped to make a shed and looked what they did. They did a real good job. They really did. Looks good. You know, fine job.
I think they did. And, uh- Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But anyway, it's, by the end of the week, we'll just about have it done. And, uh, and the gazebo, uh, Wayne Ballow started on it today.
Oh, he did?
He's, uh, he's laying rock on it today on the poster.
Whatever you call them.
Corpses.
Yeah, those are, they just look good.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, it is looking good.
It's when you get that rock on there, it's really gonna look good.
But anyway, just Wayne, Wayne started on it, so take a look at it. It's looking pretty good. He started on it today, and it won't take you too long to fix it up. Okay, that's all I had. Did council have anything they wanted to add? Yeah, well, we, uh, do we have to, we need to read the ordinance?
Yeah.
On that, we'll go back up to Suzanne on the resolution and the order.
And the ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance number 1094. An ordinance to amend the City of Ava, Missouri Code of Ordinances, repealing Chapter 82, Solid Waste, Section 132, and replacing this section with a revised Chapter 82, Section 132.
Motion approved. First reading of ordinance 1094.
I make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1094.
Billy made a motion, you have a second?
I second that.
Stan, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Everything if you'd like to do that?
Yep.
Ordinance 1094 is an ordinance to amend the City of Ava, Missouri Code of Ordinances, repealing Chapter 82, Solid Waste, Section 132, and replacing this section with a revised Chapter 82, Section 132.
There's a motion to accept, uh, second reading, ordinance 1094.
I'll make that motion to approve second, reading of 1094.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll say it.
Billy, a second. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Does it actually hear?
That's your chamber?
Oh, it is. Thank you. Glad somebody's watching.
You're watching?
No comment.
Lots of yelling and glistening.
Motion go into closing. I make a motion go in the post. Stan, second. All in favor?
Aye.